Okay. Call a meeting to order. First meeting of the 2012-2013 school year. See everybody's chipper, especially the superintendent, tonight. Our first order of business is public input. And seeing no public except for the esteemed Mr. Toros, I don't believe we'll have any public input tonight. Oh, wait, is there an-- I see an empty chair. Is there anybody in that chair? Never mind, no, we won't go there. I see a lot of empty chairs. Wow, there's no one in those chairs.
No one in them.
Okay.
I think he didn't know there was nobody in the chair.
Correct.
Well, there's one right there.
Yes.
Up front with the microphone. Or is that a telephone?
Next, we'll go to our first student report of the year. We haven't had them all summer. And tonight, we have Madison Capazuto, and I believe you're a senior, correct?
Junior.
Oh, I get. By the end of the year, I'll know your name.
That's totally fine.
And your class.
Your class.
I know. I'm sorry, Laurie. Um, Madison?
Laurie, if you're watching, don't come down to the left of the room.
All right, so, um, I'll start with, just to give you a recap of our freshman orientation that was held by SLAM back in August. We had the highest enrollment, actually, well, attendance, rather, of incoming freshmen that we've ever had, which was great. We had a lot of donations by local businesses. We were giving tours around the school. We provided maps. We had all kinds of mentoring games going on just to get the freshmen acclimated. And hopefully, we'll have some actual data and feedback to give you in a couple of weeks. On Wednesday at 1:00, Student Council is hosting ex-NBA star Chris Haren in the gym to speak on substance abuse. Actually, one of our Student Council officers, Jackie Lanzaro, who's this year a sophomore. When we went to Hyannis for the MAS C State Conference last year, she saw his presentation, was very moved by him, and went to Mr. Bernard and asked how and if we could have him come speak. So, he worked his magic, and he'll be with us on Wednesday.
He is-- Chris Haren is awesome. And he wrote, I don't know if he wrote the book, or there's a book written about him. That is a great book. And he was a great basketball player who made it to the NBA, but basically killed his career because of substance abuse. He's an awesome speaker.
He's a calling speaker, too. It's unbelievable.
He's really good.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Also, last Thursday, we had a small presentation titled "Global Camps Africa." They came in to get their word about. They were speaking of AIDS awareness. The first notice today came out about PSATs on October 20th for sophomores and juniors. To look at sports, varsity boys soccer won against Bishop Femec, 3 to 1 last week. Varsity girls soccer plays Ipswich tomorrow at 3:45. Varsity football won against Saugus Friday, 27 to 10, and they have their first home game this Friday at the High School Field at 7:00 PM. The Student Council Welcome Back Dance, which is replacing the Homecoming Dance, will be hosted on the 28th of this month in the gym. And freshman elections for both Student Council and Class Office are being held within the next three weeks. I believe they're a week apart from one another, just to distinguish the difference between the two roles. And then, we are also hosting the elections for new representatives to the school committee at some point before the end of the month as well.
Great. You excited to be back at school?
Yes. Yeah, everything's been going really smooth. I was saying to Mrs. Willis this morning that class sizes seem to be a little larger this year, but everything seems fine, and freshmen seem to be kind of getting the feel of things pretty quickly. So, I think everything's going well.
Well, I guess it's, and it's, you're in an interesting year, being a junior, so you'll be the last class to graduate from the old high school, which is kind of exciting. But unfortunately, you won't have the chance to participate in the new high school. But I'm sure you'll be back to the community.
Of course, yep.
And will be at the high school many times after you graduate.
Tell them what you, who you met.
Who did I meet?
The graduating class.
Oh, oh, oh. A few weeks ago, I was in it, down at the Center Cafe for breakfast, and the first graduating class out of the building, they were having their reunion there.
Are you kidding?
So, they were in for lunch, and my mom works there a couple of weekends, and she said, "You know, come over here. I want you to meet a couple of people." And they were so cute, and they were so excited to be meeting. I was with a couple of friends, so they were so excited to be meeting the last graduating class out of the building. And, yeah, it was, it was really cool, isn't it?
They're talking about the high school's the new school.
Yep.
When was that, 50, when, no, when was the high school, 57, 59?
57, 58, I think it was.
So, 58 would have been the first graduating class from there, right? And 54 years later, or 55 years later, 56 years later, you'll be the last.
They used to go to Redding before that.
Right.
They created to Redding.
Yes, they did.
Wow.
Not the present high school building, but another building.
Yeah. Any other questions for Madison? Thank you, Madison Capazuto, member of the junior class at the high school.
You'll forget by the time you come here.
Next time you come back, I'll have it all messed up again.
You're very welcome.
Thanks. And you probably don't have a lot of homework yet, but feel free to.
Thank you.
Make your way out.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have continued business. And first under that is an update on the school project.
Yes. The last regularly scheduled SSBC meeting took place on Tuesday, August 28th, from 7:00 to 9:50 PM. And at that meeting, the SSBC voted to approve invoices that had been submitted by the three companies currently working on the project. We also had the same community member that attended the last school committee meeting also attend the SSBC meeting, and there was quite a lengthy discussion around the use of the ball field, the new ball field that will be on campus. And after a lengthy discussion, the SSBC voted to declare that ball field a non-MIAA practice baseball field. So, an official vote was taken at that meeting.
Let me, let me ask one question.
Oh, God.
No, it's just a simple question. You can answer it, or you can ask the committee. Say there was a need, desire, or want to play a softball game there. We would not be able to, because we're going to put in a baseball field, correct? I just want to, we're going to put in the 90-feet base paths, complete baseball infield. That's the plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
But I, again, I maintain, without opening up a can of worms, say that you could convert that field in a week to a softball field if you found the need or the necessity to do so.
That's, that was where my question was going. If there was a need to do that.
If we stopped playing baseball in town.
I don't see why.
We could convert that to a softball field in a weekend.
Okay. Thanks.
The design development phase of the project is just about complete, which means the next phase of the project will be the construction document development. At this meeting, we also saw an updated web-based flyby of the project itself, and that was presented by Doran Whittier. So, we took a look at various design elements to the outside facade of the building. And in addition, the SSBC voted in the affirmative to maintain distributed ventilation in both schools. I raised the issue about the lack of lights in the new middle school parking lot at the front of the school. And again, the three companies are working together to create a plan for installing temporary lighting. Just last week, I received an email from Wayne Hardaker, who informed me that seven 400-watt HPS fixtures will be installed in the front parking lot, three on the front canopy, and four divided along the front of the building going west. So, we will be having lighting out there very shortly.
Great.
Okay. Another value engineering meeting took place on Thursday, September 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. And representatives, again, of PMA, Doran Whittier and Gilbane, attended the meeting and worked together with representatives of the SSBC to make timely decisions about materials. There will be a special SSBC meeting this coming Tuesday, September 11th, which is tomorrow night, beginning at 6:30 PM, to vote on the recommendations from the September 6th value engineering session. And that meeting will again be held in the High School Modular Cafeteria. The regularly scheduled SSBC meeting will take place on Tuesday, September 25th, beginning at 6:30, and again, will be held in the High School Modular Cafeteria.
Questions? I have a question, and maybe, again, no one can answer here. I saw in the newspaper that tomorrow night, the high school project is going to be before the Conservation Commission. What, do we know what, is that just to take a look at the wetlands issues, to approve? Is anybody aware of?
I believe that's what it's law, that wetlands issue that we have, and we're trying to get that resolved.
Okay. Because I plan, I wanted to attend that meeting. It's at 7:45, so I want to attend SSBC and then hop over to the air.
Cliff, do you know any more on that? I mean, I'm assuming it's that wetlands issue that we accounted to going up by the student parking lot and that side of the property, yeah.
It's, it's a part of the permitting process that they're going through.
Okay.
Which we're hoping to get resolved as quickly as possible, obviously.
Correct. There'll be someone there.
And I'm really happy to hear on that lighting. Cliff and I were on the way in. We're talking about going to Home Depot after the meeting and getting a couple of spotlights and running an extension cord into the school with a timer. But it's good that we hear that.
Thank you.
It is very, it's very dark out there.
It is very, very dark.
Very dark.
And when we leave, late at night, it's very interesting.
Yes, yes. Okay. So, it's all, everything, now, in terms of the, the value engineering aspect, are we now at the point where tomorrow, the SSBC will vote, we basically be voting on the final, not the final project, but on the final project for the design phase? Now, the, no, okay.
No, we're still in process. This, this process will continue.
As we go along.
As we go along.
Okay.
And it's a typical process embedded within the design development phase.
Right. So, it just keeps, okay.
Discussions about wall treatment.
Choices are going to happen.
Such as whether you have block walls in the bathrooms, or whether you have ceramic tile on, on special wall boards.
Right. So, that goes on, those go on, I'll probably write through.
Just on and on and on.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
Okay, next, we have an update on the little school retention wall. Mr. Nelson?
I have some remarks, and I believe the superintendent does, too.
Okay.
To begin with, just a little short update on where we are today. We have engaged the services of a landscape architect. This is an architect that comes to us with a recommendation from our town's Director of DPW, Mr. Carnaval. So far, we've been very pleased with the work they're doing. They're doing a full investigation of that whole 300-foot length to see what aspects of it can be salvaged and what aspects cannot be salvaged. And then, they're going to put together a cost-effective set of specifications, which will then be used by school administration to go out to bid. So, it's a long process, and they are, so far, we're very pleased with the work that they're doing. The process that will unfold will bring us into late fall at this point. There are a lot of state bidding requirements that will slow us down, but we want to do this the right way. We're also making certain that the work that is done at the specification stage passes the muster and approval of the town's building inspector, so that as we move forward, all of the relevant parties are engaged in the process.
Kathy?
Yes, and recently, I received an email from our town administrator, Greg Valukonis, inviting representatives from the school district to attend a Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, September 17th, beginning at 8:00 PM in Room 14 at Town Hall. And this, the purpose of this invitation is to speak to the warrant articles that will be reviewed at this hearing. So, what I included in my superintendent's notes to you were the articles that will be reviewed, and you can see that Article 12 pertains to the little school retaining wall repair. Our Supervisor of Building and Grounds, Wayne Hardaker, is going to attend to address this, this warrant article. But I wasn't sure if a member of the school committee.
I think I'll, I'll try to attend. I checked my calendar.
Try to attend.
Yeah, Carl, do you know if we'll, will we have, we won't have a budget or a proposal by that time? Will we have the 17th?
No, we won't. No, we won't. But, you know, we've been working so closely with him that the, the number that we wish to request of town meeting is $100,000. He's told us that in his, he has a comfort level with us not exceeding that figure. So, it would be my recommendation to the committee that the number be $100,000, not to exceed.
Okay.
And again, just to reiterate what Mr. Nelson said, we continue to have this conversation at the finance planning team level. So, the representatives from the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, are well aware of the work that's going on. I think the hearing is for those members of the Board of Selectmen who have not yet heard all of the details. Although Wayne has already attended one Board of Selectmen's meeting to give details around this issue.
We're meeting this Friday, Finance Planning, so.
That's correct. We meet Friday morning at 8:15.
Okay. Any other questions on the, or comments on the little school retaining wall issue? I, I see one other article on here, and I'm wondering who's going to be there to speak to that, and that's.
Yes, and somebody from the secondary school.
Yeah, acquire land for the high school driveway expansion. I, I didn't even know that was going to be on there, so.
There probably will be discussion tomorrow night about that. Board of Selectmen Sean Delaney was working on this particular issue.
Yeah, I'm sure Sean will, obviously, Sean's going to be there.
All right, Sean will be there anyway, right.
Right. And he's the liaison from the board.
Okay. And I guess there's nothing, the, the parking lot issue at the batch is something we're going to handle internally, correct?
Yes.
Is there any update on that, or is that something that will be?
Kathy and I are now engaged with trying to meet with all the relevant parties to ask for their support and their advice as to how to move forward. We don't really have a presentation to make at this time, but we will shortly.
I just, I'm glad to hear it's moving along, because I think that, one, I think the idea that, to put it in that temporary area for 18 to 20 spaces is the best thing to do right now. And I think it has the best chance of getting approval, and we have the funds to pay for that project.
Which temporary area are you talking to?
Across the street from the batch. Remember, we said 18 to 20 spaces?
Across the street, case because of the baseball field fence.
Because we felt that, one, the Historic District Commission might look more favorably on that, as opposed to basically taking over the whole playground area that's there now with Hut Top. And then, two, once the high school, the secondary school building project is completed, we could probably look at more, a more permanent parking solution.
I just, again, I still think, from looking at it and going down there and walking through it, that you do a similar hush to the one you have there, just below the one that you have. And I, I think it's still going to leave plenty of green space, plenty of playground, and you can put 22 spaces in there, and it seems like a very, very easy and simple thing to do without.
We were looking at 40 or 50 spaces on the other side, which would have taken up a lot.
I don't think you're going to get 40 or 50 in the other side.
No, no, 40 or 50 on the building side was what, and I think that would take up way too much.
No, no, but I'm just saying, if you're going to try to get 20 or 22 spaces out of it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'd take a look at that.
I see what you're saying, put a smaller.
The same.
We will be taking a look at all options at this particular time. And coming back to you.
Okay.
With a recommendation.
If you duplicate that exact drive we have there, there's room to do it.
And I think we have something like $30,000 left over.
Yeah.
From the batch building fund to spend on this, so.
We have made informal contact with the HDC.
Okay.
And we will have probably an invitation to attend a meeting in October or November.
Okay, sounds good. Glad that's moving along.
They're usually very reasonable.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Kathy and Carl. Those things are moving along, and I think that's very good. Okay, next, we have the School Committee Goals Action Plan. We did this last year. Superintendent Willis basically took, takes the goals that we have come up with and puts them into a calendar that we can follow and kind of check up on every three or four months and make sure we're on, on target. Do we need to go over these, or do you want, do you want to make a?
Well, this is a copy of, it's a draft.
Right.
So, I took the goals, and I plotted them out. And again, this is just a draft, so I wanted you to take a look at the timeline that has been indicated for each of the actions under the goals. And if you saw something that looked out of whack, I'd be happy to change it. Otherwise.
Looked fine to me. I don't know if any of the board members, I thought, Cliff, do you have any?
Well, when we start with the first one, it's to systematically revise and update sections of the School Committee Policy Manual, and it has a due date of May 2012.
May 2012?
Oh.
You should pull that out, though, too, I would like.
I thought it said 2013.
It should be 2013.
But not that fast.
Right. I thought that, you can't go into reverse, no time warp.
We've done, we've done a great deal. We've been on, pretty good on target of that.
Right.
And you love it.
May 13. May 2013 would be a challenge.
Would be better.
Yeah.
Yes, it would. Thank you so much.
May 12 would be a challenge.
And probably June 2013 for the.
June.
Agreed.
Right.
Take that one more.
Change all of those to 13, and it would probably be good.
Thank you.
Didn't even notice that.
I hate one of them.
Anything else? I mean, the rest of the dates look reasonable to me.
They all look dark to me. I used last year's action plan as a guideline.
Yeah, that's, right. I think that's fine. If we could see, no.
Those first few dates.
Okay. Do we need, we don't need to approve this, right? We've approved that goal. Do we need to approve this?
You've already approved your goals, so I will bring it back to you with corrections so that you all have a corrected copy.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Next, North Reading Public School 2016, School Committee Feedback on the Plan for Strategic and Continuous Improvement.
NRPS 2016.
Yes.
I distributed this at the last school committee meeting.
Yeah.
I've also just this afternoon sent a PDF copy to all of the principals to distribute tomorrow to all faculty and staff. I'm asking for feedback from any individual that chooses to go through it and provide feedback regarding comments, questions, or concerns. And I'm collecting that feedback by September 28th.
Okay, so I have feedback. I don't think we need to do it tonight. I can just give it.
That would be great if you wanted to send it to me.
I wrote notes, and I can, okay. I'll do that.
Or, or give the copy to me, and I'll take a look at it.
Okay, so if anybody else, so, and what's the date you want all the feedback by?
The last day, and September 28th.
Okay.
September 28th. And I will, again, periodically, report back to the committee in the same way that we review your Goals Action Plan, to give you an update on progress that we're making.
I really, and just a quick comment, I really liked the way we are focusing in on certain areas, strengthen those areas, which in turn will strengthen the entire education process in North Reading. I also saw some other things in here. I saw, looking to address gifted and talented students, what are we doing now? What can we do? I think that's something we've been lacking, and a lot of districts are lacking in that area. And, and I was really pleased with that. You know, the unfortunate thing is, the biggest challenge is going to be the budget to get what we need to do these things, to bring the staff on. And as you say in here, there may have to be some decisions made that might not be the most popular decisions, but if we want to focus on this core, then we may have to make those decisions. But I thought it was great, and you can tell a lot of time went into it.
It's really helped us as an administrative leadership team focus our efforts on those few areas that we think will give us the most leverage for continuous improvement in the district.
Any other comments? Great. So, by the end of September?
Yes.
Get your cards and letters into.
That's right.
Mrs. Willis.
And we will post this and, and make it a public document at the very beginning of October, so it'll be on the website available for anybody to see electronically.
Thank you. Next, we have a report on the opening day.
It went very smoothly. No, we had a wonderful opening day. I did contact all of the principals. I had a chance to visit all of the schools, and it was wonderful to hear all of those children's voices in all of the schools during that first week. The principals all said they had a great opening day, no issues. I want to really thank the custodians and our maintenance staff for the outstanding work that they do every year to make sure that our schools look the best that they can for the students upon their return. So, and again, they looked beautiful.
And the, how about the parent and bus drop off, and the, was that, I'm sure there were some questions and a few, little confusion at the middle school, correct?
Here at the middle school. Well, again, at the middle school, I also want to thank, in particular, the custodians and the maintenance staff for doing a yeoman's job in, in ensuring that this school was ready for all students, particularly those that were going to be populating in the mods. The traffic pattern seems to be a success. We do have, we had a lot of staff out there on the first day. It's tough on a principal, having the superintendent's office in the same building where you reside, because the superintendent has a tendency to be peeking out windows. So, I promised that I would stay away and let them work out the bugs before I was out there to take a look at it. But I have talked to Kathy and Michael, and they said it has gone smoothly, and there's lots of staff out there assisting, and they don't have to, but they're volunteering, and they're doing that. So, again, I thank the faculty and staff for taking this on and making sure that all of our students are safe. And after a few times, I'm sure it becomes like it had always been there.
Right. And in terms of the official enrollment number, we'll get that in October sometime, correct?
I do have some information to give, to go over today with you in the packet.
Right.
October 1 is the official.
Right.
But in your packet, you do have some enrollment information that I just wanted to share with you. You can see currently, we have 51 students attending the integrated preschool at the little school, and three students are attending a special program. It's a pervasive developmental delay program at the Hood School, and that, that is for preschool-aged children as well, for a total of 54 students in our pre-K. We do have a total enrollment at the elementaries of 1,199. At the middle school, a total enrollment of 671. And at the high school, a total enrollment, as of today, we had 733. Two more students have registered. So, we were pretty much on target with our enrollment projections for the elementary level. At the high school, we had predicted, a projected enrollment of 660. That was increased by 11 students.
Middle school. The middle school, you said at the high school.
Middle school, I'm sorry.
Please, no. Yeah. I was going to say, if we were to spend that much, we'd be in trouble.
671. So, we saw the greatest change at, in our sixth grade class. We had, last year, we had 236 students, and this year, we have 222. But now, for this year, in seventh grade, we have 243.
So, do we, do we know if, do we have seven come back? Do we have seven new students, or is that something you'll find out later?
That's something that I'll take a look at when I have the official enrollment figures.
Okay.
Because I also take a look at the numbers of students that left to go to private schools.
Right.
and the number of students that came in.
So it seems like a pretty, even though it's only seven, that seems like a lot over a one-year period. So it could, I know, as I said before, there's a lot, there's a lot of new families moving into town, and that, that could be it also. Just don't know.
We projected two hundred five students in the, for the eighth grade, and there are actually two hundred six. So we were very close as far as that was concerned. At the high school, we've seen a pretty significant increase.
At ninth grade, I don't think we expected that many, did we?
Well, we had projected one hundred eighty-five.
Right.
We currently have one hundred ninety-three, so that's eight more students than what we had projected.
That's a pretty big jump.
It's about the same in tenth grade. It's a little less in eleventh grade. We had projected one hundred sixty-five for twelfth grade. With the two that moved in today in twelfth grade, we have seven more students as seniors.
So we have one seventy-two there now?
Yes.
Wow, that's-
Wow.
Very interesting. You don't often see an increase in grade twelve.
So what did you, what was the total projection for the high school?
The total projection for the high school was seven hundred fourteen. As of today, it's seven hundred thirty-three.
That's interesting.
Significant, because-
It really is significant. It's a two percent.
Seven forty.
But we also know about the enrollments as they're shifting. We have, we continue to see a shift at the elementary level. They, the enrollments, we took a look at the last three years.
K and one seems awfully low. Is that-
They continue to fall at the elementary level.
Really low, no.
And I'm telling you that, I'm seeing it through the town. I think that we're in a phase where we're at a bottom of a roller coaster, but I see a lot of young families in this town with a lot of kids that aren't school age yet. So I'm not sure it's going to go all the way back up, but I think it's, we're going to see in the next three or four years, because, yeah, those are really low.
We will follow this very closely.
We're gonna have more and more people moving to town.
With the new schools too, we're gonna have more.
So after October 1st, when we have our official enrollment, I will come back and share the official numbers with you. And I'm also going to do something a little different. I'm also going to share the, the numbers of students in outside placements with you at the same time, so that we get a picture of the total student population.
So this twenty-six oh one number, what was your total projection?
The total enrollment projection?
Because we're fourteen, you say seventeen higher at the high school and eleven higher at the middle school?
Oh, wait, I did.
If you can't find it, that's all right.
That's okay. It was, I think it was about seven, I think it was twenty-five, eighty or seventy-five.
I think it was twenty-five, eighty-something is what I thought, but-
It's a big difference.
Yeah, and usually we don't have that much of an increase.
We don't have that much of a variance. I have not seen that in the last two years.
And it could be more by October 1st, because we could have more.
It could be.
Okay, that's interesting.
Transients.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good. Any questions on the-
No, no, not at all. All I have to say is that I have two children in the elementary school at the hood school.
Yes.
And they were very happy when they came back their first day, so.
Well, thank you for recording that.
They were very excited, so I think that's great.
Do you have a middle school or two, or?
I do.
And did you have to drive in the traffic, or your wife, or did she take, they take the bus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Just want to bring your attention to the second page, which really gives you a breakdown by school, what the class sizes look like in each of the elementaries. You can see they're very favorable class sizes across the elementary. We have our largest class sizes at the hood school in grade four, at the little school in grade five. But even though tho, those are the largest classes, the average class size is twenty-three or less. So very, the class sizes remain very favorable at the elementary level.
Great. It is interesting. We usually don't see that big of a variant. We usually see fewer than the projection, a couple fewer or around the same number. So that's a, that's a pretty, pretty big jump in term, from the projection to what we actually have. It's kind of, it's kind of unusual.
It is unusual, and I adjusted the differential between grade eight and nine and grade five and six, because we had seen a trend over the years.
Right.
But I need to readjust that. Now, not just based on one year of data, but again, if this trend continues, we don't have as many students leaving.
Well, and you have to ask yourself, is this already part of the impact of the new school? Because if you're coming as a freshman, if it's on, on time, you'll spend your junior and senior year in the new high school.
With this if it's on time thing.
Well, you know, I, well, with you on the committee, I have a hundred percent confidence that we'll be on time, but-
I'm kind of curious to see how many students also left in the elementary, middle, and high school.
Yes. I'll do the in and out. I will do that.
Okay.
Because I find that to be very interesting as well.
Sorry I jumped ahead on that. I think-
No, that's fine.
Okay. So any other questions on the opening day? It seemed to go smoothly everywhere.
It was working.
It was.
I'm gonna add that I had the opportunity to speak to the teachers the day before opening day with Superintendent Willis and Patrick Daly, and talk about an enthusiastic, excited, fired-up bunch of teachers. And the superintendent does a really nice thing where they recognize employees now for twenty-five years of service. And it was great, because there was a woman who had been, who's been a cafeteria worker for twenty-five years. She's had like five or six years of perfect attendance. And I think she was shocked when she got called up to, to receive her, her award. She was really excited. And then Lil Deesman was also, also received an award for twenty-five years, and she's great. So, yeah, but it was a, it was a, it was a good day.
They, they always have recognized, North Reading has always recognized, teachers for twenty-five years of service, but at the end of the year. So I just switched it to making them come up in front of their peers.
And I think that's good, because they get the recognition from their peers.
And some of it doesn't happen.
Right, right. So it was a great day. Thanks. Okay, next, Ms. Nelson, FY-12 Final Budget Report.
Yes, thank you. And I, for the record, I, let's mention Joanne Mahoney's name. She was the food service lead, she's the lead worker here in the middle school. I thought her name should go into the record as well.
Okay.
Thank you. We, we offered to you the final budget report for FY-12 today. It's really more putting it into the record, again, so to speak. There, there's no action necessary that you take here. The final report of the year recognizes where we spent our money. It also begins to point out some of the shifts that we had to make to react to situations. The final report also is one of the manifestations of the work we do in May and June to prepare ourselves for the next year. We're always forward-thinking when it comes to the budget. So as been reported here, because of continued savings that we, we were able to accrue, last year, the three areas that accrued the most savings in, in order of magnitude would be first, legal services. Typically, the legal costs for both special education and the superintendent's office is a bit, bit higher. And even with a negotiation year, the legal services were very low. In addition, we continue to recognize savings in our utility areas, oil and gas, electricity and telephone. So we, it's become a habit that we use some of these funds to try to support the school expenses. Since the school expenses have been flatlined for five or six straight years, we've been in the habit of trying to give them a couple percentage points, if you will, in May and June to buy paper and buy supplies. It's become somewhat commonplace, so if ever we're not able to do that, we'll have some problem, because it's almost been the way we've made them whole. So we can, we were able to do that again in June. And we're also able to, again, set ourselves up for the next year. What I mean by that is, if we have funds that are unspent, we will do things like pre-purchase supplies in the food services account, you know, purchase our hard goods, our consumables, our non-consumables, in order to kind of assuage the costs of the following year. We do the same thing in as many pre-purchases as we can. So we were able to finish off FY-12 in a very healthy fashion. We did a lot of pre-purchasing, which allows us, this year, to confront unusual situations, whether it be in special education or maintenance issues that might occur. So I'm as comfortable entering FY-13 financially as I have been in many years, because of the way we did so much pre-planning and pre-purchasing. It also allows us potentially, if we don't have any unusual costs in FY-13, to help us either, help us begin looking at the big rocks and some of the, the future costs and plans for the, the district. So this has been accepted by the town's accountant and is part of the free cash process and, and all those things that take place at year-end. Be happy to take any questions on the report.
Questions?
Does this mean Carl will give him back thirty-two-hundred-and-nine dollars?
Yes, Jerry, it was.
Okay.
So that goes into free cash, the thirty-two-hundred-and-nine?
It does. And, and I'll add a word to that.
I know. Come on, Carl.
Pencils.
You know, when you close the year, you don't have the luxury of zeroing out, because you have to leave some funds out there.
Oh, just in ca, right.
For accounts payables that are out there, and you do your best to predict them. Also, a lot of bills come in from the town of North Reading to the school department and, after the year closes.
Right.
I think members of the committee are probably aware of the fact that we buy discounted gas at the DPW. All of the, the gas, the, a lot of work is, is done on a wholesale basis with the town, and those, you can't always predict those expenses. So, yes, we have returning point oh, 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 one percent of our budget for free cash. We're doing our part.
All right, all right.
Just a couple of things. Continued praise for Wayne, his staff, Mr. Nelson, and the teachers, and everybody else in terms of conserving. You look at, I don't think we've had a big increase in either our gas and oil or utilities budgets over the last several years. And you look at how much we're spending as compared to what's budgeted, and it shows the conservation effort is paying off, both with new light fixtures, new heating systems that, you know, Wayne and staff can control from home via the internet, et cetera. That's really helping us save money on an annual basis, and, and that's much appreciated. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I didn't get to before, is thanking Wayne, his staff, and Carl for jumping on the issue we had at the high school with the gymnasium floor and turning around, turning around that project in a dime and having the high school ready for, I believe it was ready for the first day of school, or close to ready.
It looks great too. It really looks nice.
And it looks great. Because that, you know, we were in trouble there. That floor could not be used. And the ability to turn around and get that done, I think, was, is really important. And I don't know, Carl, this turning back this thirty-two-hundred, you could have brought the thirty-two-hundred-and-nine dollars to the school committee, you could have divvied it up. Five ways, right? Six hundred and forty dollars or so? Did it sound like that? No?
Could have gone over by that much.
Right.
And then we'd have had it zero bound.
Exactly. Any more questions on the budget for 2012? Hopefully, 2013 will look the, the same way in the end. We're going to routine, routine matters, before we get to routine matters, though, I think early in the meeting, before we get to routine matters information, I did want to, at this point, bring up the, the Boston Magazine issue, because I think it's a really positive thing. And, right, I wanted this early in the meeting, so not at the end, and so people watching can, can hear about how great our high school is doing and our, and our system in, in general. So I'll turn that over to Mrs. Willis for that.
Very good. If you go under F Information Number Two, Administrative Report, you received an additional packet this evening. And so, a couple of things. Start with the SAT score data. In your packet, you have a multi-year review of the SAT scores. In front of you, you can see that under Verbal Critical Reading, North Reading High School scored five forty-four, the state five thirteen, and National four ninety-six. This is for 2012. Verbal Writing, North Reading High School scored five twenty-nine, State five oh-eight, and National four eighty-eight. And in Mathematics, North Reading High School, five sixty-five, the state five thirty, and National five fourteen. If you go in your packet further, you'll see the multi-year comparison. We have seven years of data for verbal critical reading, seven years of data for verbal writing, and nineteen years of data for mathematics. But if we take a look at seven years across the board for each of those three, you can see, if you take a look at the North Reading High School's performance in 2006 as compared to 2012, that's an increase of thirty points in seven years.
We're going in the right direction. There's a few years where you get some anomalies, but in general, we're going in the right direction, and-
That would probably be because we have different populations going through.
Exactly, right. And so you get those anomalies every once in a while. You get a really strong class, you get, you know, and the, and the scores go up, but-
The performance in 2012 is the highest in the last seven years.
Right.
So it's noteworthy. And in 2006, we were only one point over the state and five points over National. In 2012, we're thirty-one points over the state and forty-eight points over National. So you can see that the performance is increasing at a rapidly, more rapid rate than state and National. If you take a look at verbal writing, in the last seven years, we have increased the score from 2006 to 2012 by seven points. We did have a little bit of a blip from 2010 to 11, but we've seen an increase of eighteen points from 2011 to 2012. So in 2006, we were twelve points over the state and twenty-five points over National. In 2012, we're twenty-one points over the state and forty-one points over National.
Just to point out, it's, it's not a good stat. The frightening thing is that on critical reading and verbal writing, the state has not gone anywhere since 2006. It's stayed the same. National's actually gone down twelve points in, in reading. And in writing, the state's gone down two points, and National's gone down nine points. So we're, we're bucking that trend nicely.
And in mathematics, out of the nineteen years of data, the score in 2012 is the highest ever. And if we take a look at the last seven years in a similar fashion, the score in 2006 has increased by thirty-nine points in 2012. In 2006, we were two points over the state and eight points over National. In 2012, we're thirty-five over the state and fifty-one over National.
That's good.
So we've made some pretty significant strides in the area of mathematics.
Very good. I think that's, that's great news. And I think these scores are part of the reason why we're getting ranked highly in, in different places, like Boston Magazine and others.
Are we all set with SATs?
Any questions on the SAT scores? It's good to me. Keep going up. That's all you can ask for.
Yep. Right. In Boston Magazine, the week, the last week in August, I typically look at the Boston Magazine, because I like to include something in my opening remarks to faculty and staff on opening day. And so, the Friday before Labor Day weekend, I just happened to go on the Boston Magazine website, and I noticed that the new edition had been published. So I started to scroll through the top fifty schools, and I got further and further down the list, and I didn't see North Reading in this year that they are taking a look at the top fifty high schools. Last year, they took a look at the top fifty districts. And then the year before that, they took a look at the top fifty high schools. So of course, I got a little discouraged, and I went to the full list of two hundred twenty-two schools. And I started scrolling down and scrolling down and scrolling down, and I came to the end, and there was no North Reading.
It's even worse.
Right. Two hundred and twenty-two Eastern Massachusetts high schools, and we're not in there. I was like, I was like, can we redo those negotiations with the superintendent? What's going on? Exactly.
Well, the two hundred twenty schools make up those schools that are included inside of Interstate four ninety-five surrounding Boston. So I again went through the list, and North Reading still wasn't there. So I gave the, the author of the article, his name is Patrick Doyle, he's the executive editor of Boston Magazine, a call. And I asked him if he could look into this, and he did. He was very gracious. And we've had several contacts between, my first contact with him that Friday before Labor Day weekend and this past Monday. I'm sorry, this past Friday. So within a week, he was able to determine that it was reporter error that did require correction. And as a result, North Reading High School tied with Hingham High School at number thirty-two. So we are ranked thirty-two out of fifty, and this is up from forty-five just two years ago.
Well, it's really thirty-two out of two hundred and twenty-two, because they, that fifty is a subset of the two hundred twenty-two.
That is correct.
So, but I have to say, the superintendent is unbelievable, because she sends an email out, and me being the PR communications guy, I automatically send back to her, "You gotta call the editor." She's like, "I already did." I, I don't underst, you know, you can take my, you can take our job, I mean, with the communications. The fact that you got on the phone right away to him, or emailed or whatever, I think was important, because this thing could have got, just fallen through the cracks if you waited too long. And, you know, it's not the be-all, end-all, but I think it's an important ranking, and we've been in there for the last three years.
Can you call the editor back and tell them that we've scored higher than Linfield in all the categories, and we're ranked thirty-two instead of twenty-eight?
Is that true?
That is troublesome.
Hmm.
No, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a joke.
I'm looking at it too.
Call him back.
Find out where we live.
Point out too, under the, out of the fifty, out of fifty schools, there's only eleven that have a lower per pupil expenditure, so.
Right.
Very interesting.
Well, and, and some of the schools we're ahead of are, are usually very highly thought of, like Duck Spray High School, Cambridge Ringe and Latin, you know, several schools in the Cape Ann League, Newburyport, Natick, we're ahead of Reading, Masco, Ipswich, Georgetown, Penntucket. It's nice that a lot of the Cape Ann League schools are on this list. It shows the quality of schools in this area.
I agree.
But, you know, we, we're in pretty good company in this list. And, and I think it is important to note that we're the eleventh, we, we spend the eleventh least of these fifty schools.
Actually, I think it's twelve, but it's still, it's still pretty good.
Boston Magazine will publish a correction in the October edition.
So this is online. In fact, we might want to link it, if we haven't already, to the website.
I have not yet.
And it's online, and it will be in the magazine. It'll have a correction next month.
And it's also important to understand that Massachusetts ranks the highest in the nation.
Correct.
And that it's very comparable to anything worldwide. It puts us in a very enviable position, doesn't it?
Certainly does.
I would say so.
And I'd also like to just comment the same as you have, that I think my, my, my instant response to the email I got from the superintendent about being number thirty-two was awesome.
Yes, absolutely.
Not just awesome, but awesome to her.
Yes. Yes, we've, we've moved up steadily. The administration at the high school continues to do a great job, the teachers. And it's a tribute to all the hard work by them and by the students, of course.
That's correct.
That doesn't hurt.
And I think it's important to note that this is a cumulative effort. It starts in preschool, and, and it ends in twelfth grade for, for our students and then beyond when they leave us. But I wanted to make sure that all of our faculty and staff knew that they had something to do with this as well. Because it takes all of us to ensure that our students are as successful as they are at the high school level.
And, and even, and, you know, even more interesting, when you look at the thirty-one schools that are ahead of us, there's only three or four that spend less per pupil than we do. I mean, the, the top school in the district, Weston High School, spends eighteen thousand six hundred dollars per pupil, which is about sixty percent more than, sixty-five percent more than we spend. So when you can spend a lot more-
Well, if you look at the top ten, it's significantly.
The, how much they spend.
Spending per pupil. Natick is down a little bit after that, but that top ten is unbelievable.
Right. So. So sorry to move that out of order, but I thought we, I wanted to get that earlier in the meeting.
Again, you have a copy of the North Reading High School Fall Athletic Schedule in, in your pocket, and Madison gave us a nice update on what has taken place up to this point. And I just want to make you aware that North Reading High School will have a presentation by our district attorney, Jerry Leoni, that will be taking place on October tenth. And he will be presenting to the juniors and the seniors on the dangers of texting and distracted driving. The presentation will begin about ten-thirty a.m., and our chief of police, Michael Murphy, and I will also make a couple of comments. But the district attorney is the featured speaker on this topic on that date.
Great. Okay. Next, the bills and perils, I believe, are all signed. And minutes, okay. We have executive session from the July twenty-sixth meeting. Michael was not present, so we will have to abstain on these. I looked through them, and I didn't see any errors on these at all. So if I can have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the executive session. Motion to approve the executive session.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Venezia. All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed? And one extension. And also, we have the open session meetings for July twenty-sixth. And I did not see any issues with those either. So, unless anybody else has any edits or corrections, I'll accept a motion.
So, moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Ms. Venezia. All's in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Unanimous.
One.
Oh, one extension, sorry. Budget update. Anything, Carl?
Not today.
Okay. We're so early in the budget season, we really don't need to be updated as of yet, so that's, that's good. Staffing, anything?
No report at this time.
Bids and donations?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates?
I'd just like to confirm that these dates work for the members of the subcommittees.
Okay.
And we've been contacting each other via email. But I'm wondering if, this is a Wednesday, September nineteenth, for athletic subcommittee at twelve-thirty p.m. The reason why we have to be possibly scheduling odd dates for the athletic subcommittee is that the athletic director is now teaching two courses this year. And so, it has to be either a green or a gold day. I forget which. And so, it move, his day, his availability moves, which means then, if we want him to be at the meetings, the meetings are going to move, so.
Wednesday's fine for me. Don't be alarmed if I'm here on Tuesday, but Wednesday works.
And I will check with Karen.
Check with Karen, okay.
I haven't confirmed that yet with Karen.
Okay.
Evaluation subcommittee, I believe I received confirmation from both.
Friday, right?
Friday.
One o'clock?
One o'clock, yes. And policy subcommittee, we had scheduled that last spring, section G. Oh, right, right. We might have a problem. And finance planning team is this Friday, September fourteenth, at eight fifteen a.m. We all have that in our book.
Right.
So, we're ready for that.
Just one thing on, I don't know if you, this is a, did you see this, the policy news thing that I received from Masq? And it has a bunch of changes that they're recommending being made in policies, executive sessions, et cetera. There's some things in here about executive session minutes that I think we need to look at, because it seems like they're saying we can now release executive session minutes a lot sooner than we used to be able to, and that the chairman of the committee can make that decision, or, so. I want to hold these over to you, and then you can have the policy subcommittee.
Thank you.
Look at that. Administrative report. You already gave it.
Yeah.
One more thing, and this can probably tie to administrative report. There was an interesting article this Sunday in the Globe Northwest, North Weekly section about fees. And I'm reading this, and I'm reading about how the city of Havrell and.
You're, you're hometown.
Right, they're reducing their fees every year, and I, where are they getting the money to reduce their fees? I guess that's the first question. We haven't increased our fees this year. I think two years ago, three years ago, we did, three years ago, maybe.
It's been at least three years, maybe more, at least three years.
I guess the, the good news for, the good news for us is, we're really in the middle of the pack, if you look at this chart. There are a lot of schools charging more money than we are now for, for athletics. And even for, for some of the activities, Hamilton Wenham charges per activity. For example, eighty-five to two hundred dollars per activity. Reading, fifty to one hundred seventy-five dollars per activity.
What's considered an activity?
After-school clubs.
Extracurricular.
Extracurricular. So, we charge one hundred twenty-five for an unlimited number of extracurricular activities. So, while I don't think any of us are happy that we have to continue to charge these fees, the towns around us have, have caught up to us. I think the story said there were eleven.
Well, the article had.
Communities that don't charge any fees at all.
There were ten or eleven communities in the North Region that don't. I know Burlington doesn't.
Burlington, Woburn.
Woburn doesn't.
Wilmington, I don't think.
Wilmington, I think, and that's, I think, because of their, a lot of, because their industrial base.
Right.
Their manufacturing.
They all classify, as far as their tax base, and they, they have a very high commercial industrial. And certainly in Wilmington and Woburn and Burlington, they do.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Could I ask you again, Mel, where, what is the source of this?
It was the Sunday Globe North section.
Oh.
It had a good, good printout of it. I mean, we are kind of in the middle. We do charge a little bit, probably a little bit higher for that first sport than some other towns. But then we, we only charge two hundred for the second sport, one hundred for the third, where some of them charge the same amount across the board for, for all three seasons.
Our family cap is still one of the highest, but there are, we're at twelve hundred for a family cap. Georgetown's fifteen hundred, Gloucester's two thousand, Newburyport's thirteen hundred, Swamp Scott's twelve fifty, and Triton is seventeen fifty. And the, the area schools that don't charge any fees are Burlington, Chelsea, Everett, Greater Lowell Tech, Lawrence, Lowell, Lynn, Malden, Methuen, Northeast Regional, Revere, Shoshine, Somerville, excuse me, Whittier, Wilmington and Woburn.
Almost all cities, except for Burlington and Wilmington.
Almost all urban, almost all urban districts, right.
Every one of them.
So, they probably get a lot more in terms of chapter seventy and, and other state and federal aid. And, you know, I, I'd still, you know, for eight years, I've wanted to lower fees, maybe at some point, but it's going to be difficult. We still, we're pretty close to a fifty-fifty split on the budget, I think. Are we, are we spending more out of the budget from the appropriation versus fees now, or is it close?
Yeah, our goal is always fifty-fifty. I think athletics, we've tipped the scale a little bit because of the issues we've been discussing here. That might be fifty-five taxpayers, forty-five students, somewhere in there now.
I think we keep it in that range, forty-five to fifty percent is a, is a good goal for us.
That participation was, you can get rid of. Is, is good for the, for the fall season. It's very good.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, according to, I was talking to, I think, Dave Johnson, and I think we're up almost three hundred.
We are.
For participation, yeah.
Well, that's interesting, because in this, in this article, it noted that when Havrell and Tingsborough lowered their rates, they saw a significant increase in participation.
But they don't have a lot of data on it. I mean, it was basically.
It was one year.
And it does fluctuate from year to year sometimes, so.
I don't know. But I thought that was interesting to look at, that, you know, I guess it's sad that everyone else has, has caught up to us, but we're not, you know, we're not the only ones charging this level of fee anymore. And the interesting thing, Hamilton Wenham, they went a hundred percent fees back four or five years ago. And they are now, this year, they're taking twenty percent of the athletic budget is coming from the town appropriation, eighty percent covered by fees.
They used a hundred percent fees to cover their entire athletic program. They wiped out the hockey program.
They lost a lot of participation when they went a hundred percent fees. So, just wanted to bring that up. Anything else? We got, let me see. Correspondence, anything?
None at this time.
Future business, just our meetings. You've talked about the subcommittee meetings. Our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, and then we have town meeting on October first.
I probably will be asking for an executive session on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
We'll talk.
We, you know, we might be able to do those, we might be able to do that after. Our meetings haven't been going much more than an hour, an hour and a half. Why don't we schedule it after? Because sometimes I know it's hard for Michael and Karen to get here, so. Schedule it for after the meeting? Oh, is it your birthday?
We'll schedule that after.
We'll bring cupcakes for you or something. Karen, we'll have Karen make cupcakes.
Okay.
She said she would before, so.
We could schedule it after, but schedule a regular meeting at six-thirty.
That kind of defeats the purpose, but.
All right, just thinking, I'll, right.
I mean, this isn't even an hour. Can we extend it long?
I had the under, Mel.